And we will review and approve the meeting minutes from October 9th. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
One of you want to second it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five zero. And we will turn it over to Mr. Myers for the administration report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several items on the report of the administration, including an update and introduction from our Special Education Parents Advisory Council. We have two guests here who are going to walk us through that overview. We also have an update from Mr. McCreary, the A.D. of our athletic department. I have some enrollment data to share with the committee. But before we do any of that, I want to start off by hearing a report from the student council. We have student council representatives, Arianna Sylvester and Gianna Gianetti, both seniors, who are going to provide an overview of recent and upcoming events at the junior senior high school.
Thank you.
As autumn settles in, our student council and greater community continue to thrive with engaging programs and events that celebrate learning, teamwork, and connection within Millbury.
This fall, our student athletes are preparing for a couple of big games. The football team, band, and cheer team have their senior nights coming up this Friday. The girls soccer team and volleyball team just had their senior nights this week. And the boys team this Saturday will face Abington at home at 1:00 P.M. The boys cross-country team got first place in the CMAC meet, and the girls team finished third overall as well. The drama department is proud to present CLU November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. They've been working tirelessly after school to put on the best production possible. The marching band also has a competition this Saturday in Redding where they are excited to perform their show, Heat.
Our student council will be hosting the annual trunk-or-tree event on Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00 P.M. Our officers, Ari, Christine, Jazzy, Claire, and Jenny will be attending an officer shop at Worcester Tech, October 25th, where we can work on our leadership skills. Thank you to the parents' club for reducing the fees for admission into the shop. And as a whole council, we will be attending the CDMASC Fall Conference at Grafton High School, November 12th, with fun workshops and great opportunities to meet new people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, could we hear the dates for CLU one more time? And do you have a way that we can get tickets for folks out there who want to purchase a ticket?
It is November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and I believe you can purchase tickets through the link in their bio on their Instagram.
And also, just a quick question. I heard there was a National Music Honor Society induction recently. I wonder if you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, so we just formed a chapter of TRIAM. I'm actually the president, so... But we had our induction, I think it was September 19th. It was really successful. We had a big turnout. I think we inducted 15 or 16 members, which is really good for the first year, so I'm looking forward to that. We have our first meeting tomorrow after school, just to like reflect on induction and plan some events for the community, but keep a lookout for that. There's an Instagram. It's like TRIAM Millbury, I think.
And you know what really struck me is you had a guest speaker and alum who graduated from Millbury and is now a professional musician, who owes his career to the music program here at Millbury. So I thought that was really neat.
Thank you, Adam, for coming to speak.
Excellent. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that brings me to the second item on the report of the administration, which is report of the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. And I'd ask our special education director, Ms. Christine Warren, if she could take it from here for introductions and an overview.
Excellent. Well, I am extremely pleased to introduce Melissa Palmeroy and Jen Lepore on our Special Education Advisory Council. So Millbury, like other communities across the state, has the opportunity to partner with parent advisory councils and special education parent advisory councils. Our groups of parents that are supporting other parents, that are advising our district and our schools to raise awareness of the needs of our community, as well as supporting parents supporting parents, parents supporting their children, and just promoting a more inclusive and productive community for our town. And we have had a group of really dedicated parents, sort of small but mighty group of parents who have led the charge in our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. So I would like to welcome Jen and Melissa up to talk about the opportunities within our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. So thank you for all you do.
Oh, thank you, Christine. Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Lepore. I'm the president of the CPAC.
Melissa Palmeroy. I'm the secretary.
Thanks for having us here. And I guess we'll just give you a little rundown about who we are and what we've been up to. The CPAC's been running now for a couple of years. It was a bit of a struggle to get off the ground. As you can imagine, special education parents, we don't have a ton of time and extra resources on our hands, and we do our best to make sure that this group exists so that any parent that really feels like they need somewhere to turn has a resource. And so slowly but surely, we have been building this tiny little community, which we really hope to grow a lot more and get our presence out there in the school a lot more, to help basically just show parents that resources are there if they're needed. And if there's anything system-wide that they feel like they need or they're lacking, that's where we can come in and help advocate. So right now, what our role is basically is parent support, having our meetings, letting people come, ask questions. We just had a parent contact us today saying they're thinking about moving into the district. What can we tell them about the special education program? We invite them to a meeting, which is the perfect spot for them to come, discuss with us and with other parents from the special education community about their experiences at the various schools within the district. We do student support, so kiddos that might need playdates, peers, social stuff is really hard for a lot of our kiddos, or even if they have practical needs, maybe someone needs specialized helmet or equipment, things that some parents' kids grow out of, need to get passed down, they're really expensive. We're trying to kind of create like almost like, you know, like the library of things that they have out in the library? Like, we're pitching around the idea of like, let's get parents together, and even if we don't have like a collective in our possession, we have resources where we could find and source things for parents who need help, because those things are expensive and they're hard to find, and insurance doesn't cover much of it. And then finally, of course, you know, IEP help, 504s. Everyone on the board has a kiddo on an IEP or a 504. We've been through it a number of years. We come with a lot of experience with various schools and team chairs, and so helping parents walk through the process, especially with this new IEP that is confusing to everybody. But we're managing, we're making it, we're making it work. So that's really the four main ways that we're here to support the community, and we really want to get more involved this year with the other school events that have been happening. We were at Elmwood just a few weeks ago. We're going to try and hit one school every month to become more of a public face. And then, you know, try and get some of these, these ideas like this library of things and these resource groups kind of off the ground and, you know, have the community start to really recognize us more now that we're, we're kind of more solid in our foundation. Is there anything you want to add? Covered it all. I talk a lot. But yeah, and, you know, we meet once a month. Our next meeting's going to be on Monday, the 3rd, because of Election Day. Normally, it's the first Tuesday of the month, and we usually do bimonthly. So we'll meet in November, and then we'll probably meet again in January. And that's just because, like we said, like, we're stretched and we don't have a lot of people reaching out to us at this time with needs. If we find that we do, we're going to go back to monthly meetings, and we meet on Zoom, so anyone can come. And we really find we get more parents that way when they can join from their homes, they don't need babysitters, don't have to worry about bringing their kids to meetings, things like that. So, and we'd love to see you guys, you know, if you ever have questions for us, if you want to be part of the community, definitely feel free to show up to a Zoom meeting. We post our links online every month. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Jen, can I just ask, so if anyone's watching at home and, you know, is wondering in terms of how to, how to get in touch with the CPAC?
Yep.
What can we tell them? And then maybe something around, something small that all of us could do to increase awareness and belonging?
So, yep. First of all, we have a Gmail account where anyone can email us. It's the CPACofMillbury@gmail.com, and CPAC is S-E-P-A-C of Millbury. It's all one word. You can also find us on Facebook. We've got a little Facebook group that's been more lively lately, and we're always checking that. The board is always on Facebook, checking messages, replying to comments. And of course, like I said earlier, we have meetings, so we're scheduled for November 3rd, January 6th, March 3rd, and May 5th are going to be our upcoming meetings for the rest of the year. Feel free to join us. And of course, if you ever get your hands on a brochure or you reach out to us online, all the board members are willing to pass out their phone numbers and their personal emails if people would rather have one-on-one direct comment, you know, conversations. So we could do that, too. And what was the second part of your question?
So I'm wondering if there's advice, you know, so whether it's someone listening or all of our school committee members, administration, et cetera, one small thing that people could do to foster belonging?
I think-
With increased awareness.
Really embracing authenticity and autonomy in all of our kiddos, and not necessarily differentiating the special education kiddos from the other kiddos. You know, we're all individuals, we're all authentic to ourselves, and I think where the most struggle happens in education is when we try to get our students all to be one way in one system. I know as educators, that's pretty difficult to make things unique to all individuals, but really at least having the perspective of like, everyone's going to learn different, everyone's going to talk different, everyone's going to have different levels of eye contact, and it's all okay. There's not one necessarily right or a wrong way, as long as it's functional and everybody's happy and no one's being harmed, you know, just kind of embracing that authenticity and worry less about the structure of the way we're used to things being necessarily. So I think that's probably the most helpful thing I can think of. What about you? Yeah? Talk a lot, sorry.
That's wonderful.
For the chair?
Yeah, reach out, you guys, if you have any questions. We appreciate you having us here.
Question? Through the chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. So I have seen cards or I've seen things at local businesses and things like that. I'm just curious, do you outreach or do you communicate with administration at each school to, do they do that? Like, do they, like, when a family-
So what we have created is a list of contacts for the Special Parent Advisory Council, because they do want to be more present at all the different school events, so that the principals can embed the calendar contacts of events that come up. So the play, for example, that is coming up that you heard about earlier this evening, so that those opportunities to connect with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council can be amplified. So that's connected through all of the building principals. And then, over time, again, it's a process of evolution, really, knowing who the contacts are for the different events will also provide more opportunities for the parent advisory.
I mean, obviously, you can't give CPAC the students' names.
Right, yeah, that's-
You can certainly give the students' families that have IEPs or 504s or new families into the district, you can give their information out. So I didn't know if that was something that was-
Yes, yes. So that, I send out information, blind copy, that provides the contacts, right, exactly.
And to Christine's point, when she was asking about inclusion and how we make our special education kiddos more of, you know, an included part of the community, having more than just the special education department championing the CPAC, making it more normal, so to speak, more typical, more usual in the school setting, and not only having it be this one thing that parents can sometimes even be afraid of, hearing the word "special education" if they don't know what it means or what it entails, they can be weary, they don't want necessarily that label placed on their kids. So having, you know, all students of all types be involved, parents of all types, all members of the school teams and the boards, you know, championing in the CPAC and just making it just your standard everyday language and not this big daunting thing that might scare people, you know?
Yes.
And may I, through the chair, as well? With our new platform of Parents Square, I don't know if it would be possible, but I know as a parent, I would forget when these meetings are. But would it be possible for our Parents Square to send out notices and then the Zoom link? And then, parents would get a note, some get notifications on their phone, and like you said, not just the population that needs to go, but just the community in general, and then they'd be able to click on this link and, and get the reminder that it's happening that, you know, I don't know how soon we'd send it out before, but I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six dates. If it was a Parents Square blanket notice, then maybe we'd get more people to be part of that small mighty group as well. So just a suggestion.
Parents Square and/or Class Dojo, because that means Elmwood.
Yeah. If we could get into Class Dojo, that's an excellent, excellent idea. I like that idea.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
But piggybacking on the Parents Square, that's something the whole district uses.
That's right.
And that can come from the superintendent's-
Right, another way, right.
-district admin.
And they just do it, right.
I also thought about like having you partner with after-school program organizations. You know, it's not just academics.
Yeah. You know, one thing that crossed my mind, and I haven't even brought this up to the board yet, but I was looking for woolly sweatshirt for my son, because he's actually going to be singing the National Anthem at the football game tomorrow.
Oh, great.
And they don't sell them in kid sizes. And I was thinking, not only for kids, but especially for our special education kids, like, what makes you feel more included than woolly gear, right? Like, so that's just something I was thinking about, like, different ways, doesn't necessarily have to be education-oriented, but it's a way to be included in the educational setting, like, wear your woolly gear day and have, you know, kid-sized woolly gear. And so I'm like, all right, maybe partner with the parents' club or something and, you know, get that going. So lots of different ways to get people involved in the community and support special education without making it about special education, is what I mean.
Well, I think we have the right person in the room for that, for that request, so-
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. And our Director of Information Technology is actually meeting, and I know Christine and I did not coordinate before this meeting, but exactly on the best method for Parents Square to have access.
Yeah, and if it was just, it came out from the superintendent's office or, well, there was your schedule, they just, boom, come out, you know, in time.
I know, like, the Parents Club, they post on Class Dojo. I haven't seen them on Parents Square yet, but I know they do, so I'm assuming if they can, then-
That's awesome.
-they do as well. I don't know how it happens. That would be somebody else.
I like that, I do. That's a really good idea. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And again, an incredibly inspiring and inspired group, and it gives us all very much hope for our community and our collaboration. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Wow. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to introduce Mr. Josh McCreary, our athletic director, who will provide the committee with an update on the athletic department, including a presentation on the fall season.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Myers, Mr. Chair, committee. It's always a pleasure to come here and update you on the goings-on of the athletic department. So let's jump right in. So some of the things I'll talk about tonight, we'll do a quick recap. I know the students before me sort of shared some of the things, but we'll talk about the fall season a little bit, talk about some upcoming events, and then we'll, I wanted to give a little bit of an update. I don't know if you remember, last year I spoke about the new league that was formed that we joined, the Central Mass Athletic Conference. So I'll give a little update on how the fall season in general has gone with that as well. So, oops, sorry about that. Numbers, registration numbers, we're still strong. I always like to look at this chart to see, coming out of COVID, obviously, we took a dip in how it's kind of come back to numbers that were before 2020, and we've been able to stay pretty strong in the median there. So I'm happy with the registration numbers for the fall. Doing a little recap of the season, as, as the students mentioned before, we have some teams. Our boys soccer is officially playoff-bound. They've qualified for the MIA tournament. Volleyball, we anticipate, they're currently ranked 19th. The top 32 in their division will qualify, so with one game left tomorrow night, they should, they should qualify. And football is currently in the hunt. They're 13th, the top 16 in their division, seven make the playoffs, so they are close. They have Bay Path tomorrow night and Northbridge the following Saturday night, so they are right there. As I mentioned before, too, we're very proud of our boys cross-country team, winning the inaugural CMAC West Championship. They went undefeated during the regular season, and then they were at Old Sturbridge Village earlier in the week and won the league, the conference title. All of them made it back, in case you saw that story. My coach just texted me right away, said, hey, you might hear about this, but all our kids are safe, and so that was good. And luckily, everybody made it back. But we're really proud of their efforts. Coaches do a tremendous job. You know, the kids, you know, really this season bonded together and, you know, it was really impressive to watch, so we're very proud of them. Some of the upcoming events, we're towards, getting towards the end of the fall season, but we still have some exciting things coming up. Obviously, as I mentioned before, tomorrow night is Senior Night, where we celebrate our cheerleaders, we celebrate the marching band, and we celebrate our football seniors. So that's going on, kickoff's at 7:00. The ceremony will start around 6:30. We have quite a few seniors that we're going to be honoring, so we're going to start a little bit earlier with the ceremony. We also have our senior night, senior celebration, I should say, for Unified Basketball next Tuesday. They'll be taking on Oxford. That game will be, I believe we set it for 3:00, 3:30. But we have three seniors that we're going to celebrate at that game, so we'd love to see a big crowd and turnout come out. It's free, we don't charge, so come on out, please. We love having a big crowd, the kids do, too. We are hosting Thanksgiving football this year. Officially, it's back. So it's been a few years since we've hosted, for various reasons, but we are hosting Oxford this year. We've started a new relationship with them for Thanksgiving. We're very excited about that. So that will be Thanksgiving morning at 10:00 A.M. As we get closer, there'll be information going out about ticket sales, pre-sale, things like that. But we are very excited to be hosting Thanksgiving. There is an Athletics Hall of Fame induction this year, November 29th, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, right here at the high school. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with some folks from the committee to talk about selling tickets and getting information out and all that stuff.
I could actually give you some information on that.
That'd be great.
There will actually be a table at the football game Friday for anybody who wants to buy tickets, and also at Matt's, at the barber, Matt, what's his?
Matt's at the buzzer?
At the buzzer, yeah, thank you. Matt's also selling them for the committee, so those are two places that you can get your tickets.
Perfect. Yep. So that's November 29th. And then winter registration will be opening soon. With the winter season coming up, the first day is the Monday after Thanksgiving. We're anticipating an exciting and hopefully long winter, with our teams going pretty deep in the playoffs and indoor track competing as well. So we're excited about that. We were able to purchase new volleyball uniforms and home varsity football jerseys, which we're excited about. So just a quick update on uniforms. I know that's always a hot topic. And then we can move right into the Central Mass Athletic Conference. So it's, it's gone well. You know, whenever you start something new, there's always, you try to think of every scenario, you try to think of everything that you can. But inevitably, there's, there's always things that come up that you have to kind of decide, you know, at the moment. We have 34 schools that are part of this league, essentially all of District Two. We combine leagues with Inter High, the Cal, the Colonial Athletic League, the Dual Valley Conference, so Hope Dale Sutton, BMR, those schools, and obviously the Swickel, and the Catholics, so St. Bernard, St. Paul, and Notre Dame. So it's a large, it's a large league. We meet, ADs meet once a month. But looking at the initial numbers, obviously we need a few seasons of data to see how the groupings are going and all that. But initial data looks positive. You know, I can give you an example with our boys soccer in our conference. Almost all of the games were decided either by ties or one goal, which really that, at the crux of the development of this league, we were looking for a competitive balance. And I think that's been pretty consistent across all the conferences within the league, which is really encouraging. That we use primarily the power rankings to decide the different conferences. And that's, so far in this fall season, seems to have, have been successful. So the, the other piece, another piece of creating this league was trying to combine resources from the different leagues. Different leagues would do different things, and leadership conferences, et cetera. So that was one thing, right off the bat in September, we were able to hold a league-wide leadership conference, which was held at Nipmuck and BBT, being right across the street from each other. We used both sites. We had about 175 to 180 student athletes there, from multiple schools. And I was able to bring six of our student athletes to that. And we partnered with Champions 21, which works with schools and athletic departments, just on leadership skills and dealing with adversity, resilience, all those, all those things we want to teach our kids. So that was really successful. That was a lot of fun. Kids had, you know, very good feedback from that. So I think that was another encouraging thing that we were able to, to pull off, you know, kind of at the start of the season, was to get athletes in a room, talking to each other, getting to know other schools. And I had one athlete come up to me, I believe from North High. He recognized me from presenting at the conference. So, you know, it was, it was, it was really exciting to see that to come together, you know, right away. And just in general, I, I think there's a good camaraderie amongst the ADs within the league that we were hoping for. So I guess my overall report for that is it's off to a strong start. So, other than that, open for any questions? And the Woolly Store will be offering kid sizes.
Through the chair, I don't, I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment that the formation of CMAC was no small feat. Mr. McCreary led the charge on that. I think there was widespread recognition that the alignment for the different leagues was not working out for every school, and they need a better way of doing it. And this is long overdue, and I really appreciate his effort to take that first step forward and make this a reality. So thank you.
Thanks. It's, it's been, it's been fun.
Any other questions? If not, I would like to propose that we take something out of order so that Mr. McCreary can actually go home today. If there's no objections, we would like to move the unfinished business A up to right now. Hearing no objection. Mr. Myers?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, the committee granted initial approval for a field trip for 13 student athletes to go to Orlando, Florida, to participate in a basketball tournament. We discussed this briefly, and the committee gave an initial okay to start investigating at its June 11th meeting. And I'm happy to say that Mr. McCreary is back with the itinerary and details in a request for final approval.
Yes, and, and thank you for taking it out of order. I would love to try to get to my son's flag football game, so I do appreciate that a lot. So, back in June, I was here and sort of expressed the, or asked for the initial approval for, for this trip. The varsity boys' basketball team is looking to go to Florida over holiday break to play a couple games in, in an organized tournament, if you will. And since then, they've been working hard in terms of fundraising, because the ultimate goal is to have it fully funded. So families don't have to, especially at that time of year, have to come up with money to go. So some updates, I did share the itinerary overall, and shared the, the information sheet with current information. So they are looking, just as a refresher, I guess, looking to travel to Orlando, Florida. They'll be flying out of Hartford. In terms of trip funding, they're currently sitting at just below 90% of meeting their ultimate goal, which is really great. And it was able to cover, you know, some of the initial costs and all that stuff. I think we're looking at worst-case scenario, if a family had to come up with $100 to $200 to be able to go. But also speaking with, with Coach Donnelly and everybody involved, they're, they're pretty confident they're going to be able to, to make up the rest of the, the percentage, which is really encouraging. And again, they've been working hard. Some of the things they've been working with Snap, Snap, which is a fundraising company. I'm sure some folks have gotten some emails and things like that. I know I have. They're looking to sell some media guides this winter, which is new and exciting. They've done different raffles, and, and obviously various businesses and, and around town and around the area have donated, which we're very grateful for, for that support. 13 players, three coaches, and then we do have an administrator going, Victor Cologne, which we're grateful for him being willing to go. So we will have an administrator on the trip. And just some of the safety and expectations, you know, we'll be having a pre-trip meeting with me, everybody that's going, and also with families. We will go over protocols, school expectations, all that stuff. And I typically will have them sign a contract agreeing that while they're in Florida, it's still school rules, it's still all the good stuff that, that comes along with being in school and being a student athlete. So, and, you know, during the trip, again, similar protocols where before they leave, the luggage is here, it's all inspected and everything. And when they're down there, they'll have the room checks, the cleanliness checks, you know, all that stuff, a lights-out time. As you can see in, in the itinerary, it's a pretty busy schedule when they're down there, between practice times and, and having games. They will play two games, which will count towards their MIAA schedule, towards their rankings. But I, I think, you know, the thing that they're most excited about, you know, obviously, other than going to Florida in December, is just kind of the team bonding and, and, you know, the experience that that is, which, you know, is, is I think what we're trying to do is provide experiences for kids that, you know, they'll remember for a lifetime. So, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of all the work they did. They knew what was in front of them, you know, and, and they did a really nice job getting to this point. So tonight, I would humbly ask for, for final approval for the, for the trip.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I had the privilege of seeing a lot of those boys this past Sunday at the East Waters Fall Festival, and they were great. They were, so they have teamed, a local author, Chris Richards, wrote a book, a memoir about some families. And they partnered with him, and they were doing a fundraiser. And they were professional, they were kind, walking around with the book, trying to get it sold or whatever. I want to say there was at least 10 different boys there with their families. Young, they really, I mean, they weren't goofing around, you know, like silly, and they were, you know, they did a great job. So, and a shout out to local author Chris Richards for donating the proceeds for that, you know, that family. So I just think that was...
Chris was a graduate of '89.
Right. Right. Millbury Woolly, from Woolly. And I just thought it was a great thing. And I know Tina was there as well. And it was just really great to see, you know. Yeah.
And I think that's why I personally have confidence in the boys going on that trip, you know, that, that they'll behave and represent Millbury, the town, let alone the athletic department and the program.
Be safe and have fun, too.
In the way that we would want them to, yeah.
They were so articulate, and so eager to tell what they would be doing. But, and I'm glad you remembered the author, because I couldn't remember the name. But just, that's a, that's a real kudo to, to the, the coach, that those gentlemen, young men were very respectful. And I was really impressed. I was really impressed.
My sister was, too.
I just had to tell you, too. I'm glad you brought it up.
Well, I hope your sister bought plenty of books.
Oh, she bought a book. I bought the book, too.
I just gave money. I didn't, I didn't buy the book.
No, it's a great, it's a great.
I didn't buy the book.
Nothing So Broken, just putting a plug out there. It's a great book. Great families. Good.
Excellent. Any other questions, Ms. McCreary? If not, could I have a motion to approve the basketball team and coaches and administrator going to Florida in December?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
You can't hear it through the TV, but I think they're all cheering. Very excited. Yes. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We will go back to our regularly scheduled agenda. Mr. Myers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one more item on the report of the administration, and that is each fall, I typically update the school committee on current enrollment and also enrollment trends over time. And I do that for a couple of, in a couple of ways. First, I try to show the distribution of enrollment across grades. And I do have to apologize, if you take a look at the, the chart that's up on the screen, the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school years, those totals are inaccurate. I'm going to fix that and bring it back to you. This graph is accurate. So our current enrollment is 1,645 students. That does not include pre-K, which is very healthy and has a sizable waiting list to get into pre-K. But we have 1,645, which is a slight increase from last year, about 14 kids. You can see we, we experienced a little bit of a dip post-COVID, where we dropped as low as 1,546 kids, which is the lowest our enrollment has been since prior to 2008 by far. But we are rebounding. And I, I share this graph with you because eight years ago, when we started to do an enrollment study for Shaw, the MSBA did a lot, a long study to try to predict what our school enrollment will be over the next 15 years. And they determined that we would be plateaued. We would not see any big spikes, but we wouldn't be losing a lot of population either. And so this is, this is rumbling along at just about a plateau with dips and spikes here and there, but nothing significant. And for the most part, our class sizes, we do have a few bubbles. There are a few grades that are large, but we have some grades that are rather small, so it does even out. We do try to make combinations for those larger classes so that, especially at the younger grades, the class sizes don't get too large. But we don't always have the resources to be able to fix that. Nate, I see you nodding. Do you have experience with large class sizes?
Yes. My class is well over 115 people. I think the smallest number of classmates I have in a class is at least 25.
Yeah.
So.
Yep. Yeah. So we definitely are making use of our space.
Yes.
Which is a good thing. But as typically happens, usually the, the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, we see a little bit of a dip, where kids are going to other places for high school. But we also see an influx of school choice students who are looking to come here for high school experience. So I'd also like to point you to another number that we track, and that's the number of homeschool students that we have in the district. As you know, by law, parents may elect to homeschool their students. They need to submit a curriculum plan to the Director of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Bootyette, and give annual updates on their child's progress. But you're also going to see a correlation here, where we're seeing an uptick post-COVID in parents choosing to homeschool their students, with a high of 37 students being schooled at home in the 23, 24 school year. Currently, we have 29 students, which is a little bit of a drop-down. I know that homeschool families have a lot of resources designed to support their children through homeschool networks, but also, like Coach Donnelly, who is the, the coach of our basketball team. He lives in town, and they homeschool their children. And their children are very active participants in our drama club, in our sports. They can access after-school activities. So we make every effort to make sure that the experience of our homeschool kids is, is whatever that family wants it to be. In the final piece here, I want to show you, also just in the spirit of, of showing you how we're, we're stable in our numbers, but our BBT applications, acceptance, and attending students over time. This year, we have 18 students who were accepted to BBT, 15 elected to attend. So our six-year rolling average, we typically have about 45 kids applying, 21 getting accepted, and 17 and a half students elect to attend on average. Now, this is, this is not our total enrollment. This is just the number of kids entering the freshman class each year. So as each graduating class moves off, you know, our total number is going to dip. So you see, we had a little bit of a spike in 21, 22, but those numbers are coming down because in 21, right, they're now seniors. I want to share with you also, and this will be on the town warrant, is that we had an unexpected number of kids, families choose to attend Norfolk County Agricultural School. And that's a pretty unique school, where kids have access to a lot of outdoor experiences. Really, it's something that is very big in my town, where there are more dairy cows than people. So the kids want to inherit their family farms, or they want to go into veterinary medicine, or they want to work with animals. So we typically average one or two kids going to Norfolk Aggie. This year, we have five. And so the town budgeted, budgets for two, they expect. So they did not have those three students in their budget for the last town meeting. So that's why it's on this warrant article, to make up for that tuition that they didn't budget for. There was an effort, I want to say, within the past 10 years, where BBT proposed creating agricultural wing, for lack of better words, in order to be able to service Central Mass schools, who wanted something closer. And that's one of the few things that BBT has asked for, that the member towns did not agree to. Just the, the infrastructure upfront investment was too large for towns at that time. But as a result, towns are paying, you know, in drips and, and dabs here and there as their kids go off. These kids have a long day. They catch the bus at Goretty's at 6:00 AM. They don't get back until 4:00 PM, so, because it's a haul out there. And they, but they do get a quality education.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Let's have a quick question. So if there's, you know, 18 kids that are accepted, right, and we've got 15 attending, I'm, I'm just curious, so there's 37, is there some, like, there's no, like, waitlist, or there's no, like, kids who are pre-qualifiers that might kind of be able to make it in, because they offered 18? I don't know. I was just curious about that.
Yeah. So this is all going to change, starting this year. The state has, Desi has changed the rules. But this, in this case, 18 students, Millbury students, were offered a seat, and only 15 accepted. And the students who were not, who chose not to go, their seats went to the next qualifying student among all the member schools.
Oh.
And what the, the model that I think BBT is moving towards is to give each district a certain number of seats based on the town census. So it's more representative of your enrollment. So you get a portion, Milford will get quite a few more seats than Douglas.
Sure.
Which strikes me as a little bit more fair.
Mm-hmm. Nope, absolutely.
Because proportionally, I think Hope Dale loses a lot of its freshman class every year to BBT.
Yeah.
And so proportionally, that's a lot more than they accept from Milford, actually. Another piece that they're changing with the enrollment process is that they are taking, before they had a pretty, pretty, I don't want to say complex, but comprehensive scoring system for allowing students to apply. One had to do with academics, heavy on academics. There was a piece around behavior. There was a piece around attendance. And then there was an interview, which was worth the most points. So whatever happened in that interview, ultimately, the interviewer made the decision whether or not you were accepted. The state's moved away from that, and so now it's a blind lottery. But get this, this is going to sound like an oxymoron. It's a blind weighted lottery. So you will, if you apply, you get one, one point, one, one ping-pong ball in the, in the bucket with your name on it. If you have attendance, that's better than, Ms. Bootyette can correct me, I want to say they allow you to miss 20 days of school. It's a significant amount.
Per year?
That seems high.
Yeah, for the previous year. Like, they, they, I thought that that was a pretty low bar. So a lot of kids are going to get a second ping-pong ball.
Right.
And then if you have no serious discipline, and serious discipline needs to be negotiated, is what that means. Before, it meant if you throw a cookie in seventh grade, you can't go to BBT. But now, it's, it's a little bit more stringent. You'll get a third ping-pong ball.
Okay.
So it's, it's blind, but some kids have more options of being selected than others.
Gotcha.
And grades do not count as much. It's much less, and there's no interview. Oh, I'm sorry. And there's also a statement of interest. So kids can explain, hey, I want to go to BBT because my dad owns an electrical company, and it's something that I've always wanted to do. I want to follow my family's footsteps. That's pretty, pretty compelling, as opposed to, my good friend goes there and I like their soccer team.
Yeah. Yeah. That's good. Yeah.
Any other questions about the enrollment?
Through the chair. I just happen to, my eyes always look over at the primary kindergarten, first grade, second grade. So I like that those numbers are lower. You know, 110 in first grade right now, 110 students. That's good. So let's keep that low.
Ms. Bristol, I remember every year, we followed that bubble, where there's a large number of kids moving through. And if we, in a perfect world, we'd be able to float a teacher and create another classroom, but that just shifts the class size burden somewhere else. I know in bigger districts, we would have, we would, if we were a bigger district, we'd have more latitude, but, yeah.
I'm just thinking, for the purpose of instruction with having a smaller class, when they're in younger grades, you know, primary teachers, in my opinion, shouldn't have more than 20. But in a perfect world.
So as someone with a high school background, I would not have understood what you were saying until I went to Elmwood and saw what it takes to be a teacher of little ones. Because you're teaching them how to be students, along with teaching them, you know, their ABCs.
To read.
And recess in the winter, God help you.
Doesn't get any easier in fifth grade.
No. And then if I may through the chair, again, in the fourth grade, which is such a pivotal year for organizational skills, for autonomy, for, you know, that fourth grade year is a real pivotal year, too. I just wanted to say. My two cents, too.
Does that close your report?
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to announce that that concludes the report of the administration tonight.
I'm pleased that you are pleased. Let's move to the Finance and Operations, Mr. Bedard and Mr. Mara.
Yes.
That's pleasing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we're going to start off with an update on the federal entitlement grants. We're going to give you a little bit of an overview of what we actually have received for 2026, and a little bit of a preview, what we're hearing, what we're seeing so far for fiscal year 2027, for next year's grants, which might have some implications in terms of our budget for next year as well. So we have six entitlement grants. We want to go over them with you tonight, like we do each year, not because you need to vote on them, but because in our financial procedures manual, it's really best practice to review these with the school committee each year, how much we're getting each year in entitlement grants, what they're being used for, and how that might change from year to year. So that's why we're going to do that tonight. They are entitlement grants, like you're going to hear about Title I, IDA for special education. We get them each and every year. But the numbers you're going to see, and I was going to ask Mr. Myers to go to where the actual financial numbers are embedded up above. But the numbers you see there, Ms. Warren and Ms. Bootyette do need to apply for them. So those grants just don't automatically come to us. There's an application process, there's an approval process. The Desi goes back and forth with both our grant liaisons to make sure we're adhering to the grant. So in this year, fiscal '26, we just recently got awarded six entitlement grants totaling $844,110. That is just very slightly down from last year. And you can see that 844 is very consistent to what we've received the last three years. So last year was 845,000. The year before was 844,000. So those six grants have been about the same each and every year, even though, as you know, a lot of the salaries we pay in those grants are going up each year, but they've been at least maintaining what we have. So the six grants that total 844,110, we have three grants in particular we're looking at, we're hearing, we're learning. We don't have confirmation yet. Of course, it's a long ways before we get awarded any numbers for that. But the meetings that Ms. Bootyette has been at, and the meetings that Mr. Mara and I have been at, we're learning that Title I, which primarily pays for our Title I tutors, might be being reduced by about 27% for next year, which you can see on the spreadsheet, that is the equivalent of bringing it down to $174,000 from $238,000. In Title II-A and Title III, and I'm going to ask our grant liaisons to explain what these grants mean in a minute, but Title II-A and Title III, they're looking at completely reducing to zero. So there'd be no grant for those. So that would be a, a complete reduction, which has us quite concerned. So you can see, embedded in the main summary is, and also you'll see it here on this spreadsheet, there is a description embedded there on what each grad does, what the purpose is. Tells you briefly why it's important to each district. And then, you know, because of that, you'll be able to see, when you hear the explanation, why the cuts are so important into next year. why the cuts are so important into next year. So we wanted you to hear a little bit about some of the cuts we're hearing because in in two months or so, you're going to have a budget presentation that you're going to hear some of that. And you're also going to hear some of that thing we might need to make up in our school budget because of some of those, some of those cuts. So there are, there's a relationship between the federal grants and '27 and what our school budget will look like, like, like we haven't had before. Pretty much, we've maintained our grants in the past. So I was going to ask Ms. Bootyette, four of the grants are hers that she administers. Two of the six are Ms. Warren's. If you could briefly explain what each grant means, and in your particular case, Ms. Bootyette, there's three of them, three of your four has reductions. So if you could kind of explain to the school committee what that might mean, what the reductions might mean if we have to do that.
Sure, absolutely. So my title grants, so to kind of explain them as a, as a group, they are all under one umbrella, which is referred to as the ESSA, not to be confused with Esser, the ESSA grants. And so that stands for Every Student Succeeds Act. And basically, the the bundle of grants is named after whatever ed reform policy we're under right now, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. I'm going to take them in order and kind of go through them that way. So Title I, our Title I grant for, so Title I grants are based off of, the percentage of, the amount of money that we get is based off of the percentage of students that we have that are categorized as kind of coming from like low income. So the higher percentage you have for your community, the the higher the amount of funds you're going to get for Title I. And Title I is geared towards providing supports for interventions, kind of making sure that all of our students academically are getting the supports they need to be, you know, kind of on an even playing, playing field. We do use almost all of our Title I grants to fund Title I tutors in our spaces. So currently, we have three Title I tutors at Elmwood. We have three Title I tutors at Shaw. And we have a Title I math tutor for the junior, senior high. We did, we used to fund a math tutor and a reading tutor for the high school. But we were able to, in our last budget cycle, we kind of, we put that reading tutor into our local budget. So we weren't under the same constraints that you have with with Title I, which I'll explain in a minute, to be able to kind of service more students in that area. So, so to speak a little to the constraints, all of these grants, these title grants have, yes, we are entitled to the funds, but we do have to go through an application process for them. And that application process is our way of saying to Desi, you know, we are going to use these funds for the specific purposes that you have said this grant is for. Some of them have, some, for my grants, some have tighter constraints than others. With Title III actually being the one that probably has the tightest constraints, which again, when I get there, I'll explain those. Title I, for the most part, the one piece that sometimes can be a little challenging with Title I is that Title I intervention supports, we cannot provide those supports to special education students in the areas that they receive special education supports in. So for example, you could be a special education student who receives supports in reading, but you don't receive those supports in math. And then the Title I tutor could service you in in that area. But they just can't be overlapped there. It's just one of the requirements of the grants. You, something that you will hear, I know I've explained it before, but it is a big part of all of the title grants, is something that they call supplement, not supplant. So when I do the forms for all of these grants, I have to make sure that I am not replacing something that we currently fund in our local budget and saying, okay, now I'm going to take that and I'm going to pay for it with title grant funding. I can't do that. So it has to be something that supplements our current local budget and our current resources that we already pay for and take care of. So it's just one of, one of the pieces that we have. So, yeah, you can see where 27%, how much money that is going to take away from our, our Title I funds. And, I mean, there's no way to kind of make that, make that seem easier than it is. That is absolutely going to affect the intervention supports that we provide for students. There, there is, there is just no way around that. And you can see that total there. What I will say is this, we already are very creative and careful about how we take, when I, when I get the amount of Title I funding that we are receiving, when I see that total, we try to maximize what we can do with those funds. So for example, one of the first things I do is I look at the school calendar. And one of the things we do is we can have our Title I tutors start a little later than, you know, the start date for all students. And the reason behind that is everybody in those first couple of weeks of school, we're just, we're trying to get to know each other. We're trying to establish our classrooms. We're actually figuring out with some data cycles. We start our iReady testing right away. We get really good, fresh numbers of kind of who needs those intervention supports and where they need them. It allows us to get that accomplished and then start tutoring. And so what that also does is that takes, that's two weeks where, you know, again, if I had endless funding, sure, we could all start on the same day. But if I can kind of push that out a little, I'm saving a little money there. We may have the short week for Thanksgiving, you know, week when we have that. No Title I tutors will work that week. We save a little there. Days where we have maybe, in Elmwood and Shaw, they have the parent conference days that are half days. And those days are a little funny already. We're already trying to cram so much into those hours, though maybe those days we don't have Title I tutor support. We also can decide the start and end time for those tutors. So maybe they come in like a half an hour after we've started the day so that, you know, especially like when thinking of those Elmwood and Shaw classrooms specifically, they're probably doing their morning meetings, those types of things. So I can, we can start a little bit later and then maybe we, we end a little bit before the end of the school day. So there are a lot of ways that we have found to be able to maximize those tutors when they are in the building. Rather than saying, if I can save, you know, rather than just cutting a tutor completely and I can kind of handle it that way, that, that's worked out well for us. That being said, I'm not sure that, that, that it would be possible to be able to do that with 27% reduction. But we're, we're always up for a challenge. And I will say, it's, it's really all about how, what is the best way we can support our students and still meet their needs? Those intervention supports are huge. The work that our, our Title I tutors do is essential to our win blocks, our what I need blocks that we have for students at Elmwood and Shaw. Being able to have flexibility with Title I tutor hours for what we do at the junior, senior high with having to follow a rotating schedule, we need those hours. So, you know, that, that, that's something that we are concerned about.
So how, if I can jump in?
Sure.
How will, how will the coaches' jobs change without, if we, if we have to eliminate six tutors? You know, how, how will our coaches now get more involved in the?
So our, our coaches are already super involved in that process. And the work that they do right now, looking at data, analyzing data, planning those interventions, having those intervention supports, sharing that with tutors. If you had less tutors or tutors had constrained hours, they're still going to have, be able to provide that support for the tutors that we have. But it will, it will probably make it so that we could take some of those interventions, some of the groups that they plan, and they'll have to share those with those classroom teachers. Because those classroom teachers are going to have to absorb some of that. So I'm now planning interventions, the same interventions you would plan with, for Title I tutors could be shared and trained and worked on with the classroom teachers. It, it's, it would just really take that work and spread it into a different realm a little bit that way. But they would still be doing those same things and still be providing those same supports. Those, those pieces would still exist.
Right.
Title II, so Title II for us, the Title II grant is a grant that is used to, in a really broad sense, improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals, and other school leaders. That's kind of the big, the big umbrella they give you for what you can use it for. Title II for, for Milbury, as well as most districts in the area, it funds our mentoring program. So one of the, that's one of the big pieces. Our mentoring program is a requirement. So we are required by the, by Desi to have a robust induction and mentoring program. There are certain requirements for, minimum requirements for hours and minimum requirements for what you need to do to support new teachers. We go above and beyond that with our mentoring program that we currently have. It, it allows us to fund new teacher orientation days, kind of any of the materials that we need for that. All of that comes out of Title II. And then we do use whatever, because that is a changing number every year. Depends on how many new teachers we have, how many new staff we need to support. Depends on how many mentors we need. So the rest of that, those funds go towards professional learning experiences. And actually, we have incorporated a little bit more intense professional learning opportunities for our new teachers right into our new teacher program. And we fund that first through there. So, that being said, Title II, if you look on your sheet, is one that is being slated for a 100% reduction. So if those funds were to go away that we use to fund our mentoring program, we, it is still a requirement. Also, it's, it's something you would do for your new teachers. We want to make sure they have mentors. We want to make sure that they're supported. It's one of the biggest ways we can make sure that we're retaining quality educators. So we would need to find a way to be able to, to fund that. So to Mr. Bedard's point, this is a place where you would probably see this showing up in our local budget, finding some funding sources for that. So that is a piece you're going to want to keep your eyes on. Title III. So Title III is, Title III is not a funding source that we have always had. Title III was newer for districts. Not all districts receive Title III funds. It does depend on your percentage of L students. We are a district that, that started receiving those funds. And we had actually seen some slight increases there. We, this one, this is the grant that has the tightest constraints on it. And when I say constraints, I simply mean different categories and different places where I have to spend the money. So I have to submit, when I submit for the Title III funds, I have to show that I have money in programmatic support and instructional resources. Some of my money has to go there. Some of my money has to go to family and community engagement. It can look like a variety of different things. They give you a bunch of ideas. And some of my money has to go towards professional development. But of course, that's professional development that is specific to supporting our, our Ls or, or supporting our educators. And this can be general educators as well. We've actually used some of this money this year to support some of the training that we're doing around our SEI strategies for our general education teachers to make sure that they have really great, robust strategies to support the L students in the tier one setting. So those are the categories for those funds. This is another grant that is, we're being told to predict 100% reduction. So for this grant, what we would need to make sure that we reflected in our local budget are just some of the program resources that we do use for our newcomers. So some of those resources we have paid for, and those are one-time payments because some of them are like hard copy resources. We have them, we own them, we don't need to purchase them again. We have a few that are subscription-based, like digital resources. I will say, these are not large amounts. These are not large resources. You know, we're talking, I think the one that right now is the most for us is Summit K-12, which is a resource that they're using. And that comes in at about $5,000. And that probably would be the highest one. So, so we would see a decrease there. Right now, we do utilize some of these funds to pay for resources that are a part of our cultural celebration night. But we also have other grant sources for that, that are outside of, of our Desi grants. And so that would be something that, I think that falls into the category for us of being able to use some of these funds for that was a really nice to have. But, but we have other ways of being able to kind of fill that gap. Do you want me to pause here for, I went over two and three quickly, so, okay. Title IV. So our Title IV funds are, this grant is, again, big umbrella. It's called Supporting Safe and Healthy Students and Using Technology Effectively. So it's, it's two different buckets. We utilize these funds to, a lot of our curriculum resources have a digital component to them. So anytime we have gotten a new resource that, as long as it has a digital component to it, I've been able to use Title IV funds to pay for all the initial training for our educators. And those are usually pretty large amounts, especially year one of a new program. So the best example I can give you is, last year, we added illustrative math to support nine through 12 in our math courses. That is a new math curriculum, but it, all of it is, has a digital component to it. And so I was able to pay for all of the training. And we made sure all of that training was in person. We had somebody come to us. A lot of, a lot of curriculum companies at this point, because it's easier for them, have moved to the option of having a Zoom training. We have found that is not effective. So we, it mattered to us that that was in person and we were able to use the funds for that. I will say, yes, we are getting a reduction in these funds. Next year, we do not have a, a new resource rollout. I feel like this is a place where if we get that 27% reduction, we will be okay. I feel like this is a place where we'll be okay. I also feel like this is a place where some of those Title IV funds could help us with some components of the professional learning piece of our new teacher mentoring program. So there's a little piece of that where we could kind of be able to use some of those funds there. And then also, we have used these funds for, if I do any training, anybody requests a training that falls into the category at all of SEL, so any mental health trainings, any of those, I can use these funds for that as well. So, but again, this is a place where I feel like with the, even with the 27% reduction, because we don't have a major training use of these funds kind of on the horizon, this is a place where, where we would be able to maybe not have to absorb that into the local budget. Does anyone have any questions? That was a lot, yeah.
I have one. It actually goes back to Title I. You'd said that there are some strategies you were, I don't know whether you've already used them or are looking at using them to like have people start later, like about two weeks later, or, you know, reducing hours by having them come in a little bit later or leave earlier. What's the makeup of those roles at the school? Are they like, is that their full-time job? Or is that something that those people do as like a, you know, like post-retirement or something like that? I guess I'm trying to get a sense of those people who essentially are going to be affected by a salary reduction. Does that cause problems for staffing in the future?
So a couple of things. So Title I tutors, when you are, when you're hired to be a Title I tutor, it's, you're not on a contract with us. You're, you're, you get an hourly rate, the tutors submit time slips. We are really good about letting tutors know, like, we're not, so all of the current tutors that we have have to receive at the end of every school year what we call a reasonable assurance letter. It's something we use for our paraprofessionals as well. So it's, we're, we're going to reasonably be able to assure you that, you know, that you will have your position next year with the, these hours. I actually am able to usually make a pretty good prediction for them. So I can send them those letters with pretty concrete hours that show that shortened time so that they absolutely know what kind of, better way to say it, but like what they're getting themselves into, right? And I actually attach the school calendar right to it, showing the days that they will and will not work. So they know right away kind of what the expectation is and what they're going to make for the year. They are very, very aware of this situation. We thought it was actually going to happen, maybe potentially even for this year. We heard that a little over the summer, and I stay in contact with them constantly. They also are aware that, quite honestly, from year to year, these positions are always dependent on grant funds. We, we all, I mean, as you can see with them, like, we, we know pretty much they've stayed pretty steady. But that's a conversation I always have with all of them. If I ever were to get a surprise massive cut in my grant funds, even in years where we're not talking about grants the way we are now, they know that that would then affect hours and positions. As far as like, you know, kind of who takes on these roles, who, you know, it, it varies. We, we have found in the past couple of years, we do have some. We recently had a tutor at Shaw, she actually did fully retire. But we had a tutor at Shaw who was working kind of a little bit out of retirement. That will happen sometimes. I started as a Title I tutor here in Milbury. That's how I began. It is very common for somebody right out of school to have this be their first, their first step into, into a district. We have numerous teachers in this district who started in Title I. So it's a great way to get your foot in the door, you get used to a system, and then all of a sudden, oh, you know, as in my case, a preschool job opened up and then that, I was able to get, you know, my full-time position here. So that's actually, and currently, that's, that's mostly what we have. Or a lot of times, it's, it's, you know, people who are kind of maybe stepping back to the workforce, have a lot of family commitments still at home, aren't really ready for that. Like, I'm going to take on like a, you know, a contracted teacher position, but I'm going to kind of get my feet wet a little bit, so, yeah. to kind of get my feet wet a little bit, so, yeah.
Yeah, it was more of a, it wasn't, the question wasn't aimed so much as like, is, you know, what's the actual makeup? It was more of a, does this, is this going to present staffing problems in the future? Because the people are going to say, yeah, these reduced hours are not going to work for me, and then we run into problems where it's, we're struggling to find people to fill those roles. That was more than.
We haven't had a hard time finding, even when we have seen reductions, maybe in the amount of hours that they've had. It's, you know, we've been, maybe we've just been fortunate that way, that it like, it's kind of, you know, we find the people that it works for, and we've been lucky that way, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just to further clarify for Mr. Tabor too, like, as Ms. Boudier had mentioned, our Title I tutors are not part of any collective bargaining agreement. So we provide with them each and every year a benefit summary sheet that basically says, you know, any benefits you have, your rate of pay. It does not say the hours, so that gives us the flexibility to change the hours that they work. The reduction in the hours, it would only turn someone into like a part-time employee according to the town, and with the town, and we follow what most towns and cities have, if they're under 20 hours a week. So the threshold to be a full-time employee in Milbury is 20 hours. Many of them are above that. Even with the reduction that you're talking about, Ms. Boudier, I'm sure they would still be a full-time employee with benefits.
Thank you.
Mr. Bedard, as we're putting the budget together this year, obviously, these cuts are going to hurt. I suggest that we outline where the pains are going to be felt, just so that the town knows, you know, we're cutting XYZ programs, and this is the impact. That's an important factor.
And Mr. Chair, this is not good news, but we did meet this morning with the leadership team to share with them that we've been supported incredibly by the town for many years, but this year, with the cost of health insurance, the debt service reductions here, and also the MTA, you know, salary increase, we're going to have to tighten our belts and maybe look for some efficiencies. So they're well aware of that, too.
And as you can see on the summary, this represents $128,122, and that's about a half of 1% of our current budget. So that's a lot. So you heard a couple of times Ms. Boudier talk about we'll be okay. That's also what the leadership team is looking at. What do we have to put in the budget, and what will we be okay? Because we have to improve that $128,000.
May I through the chair? First, I have to say, I'm really impressed on how you've tried to take pieces from here and there to spread and provide the best service for the kids. That is really impressive. Not to rub salt in the wound, but have you found over the years that our need for the amount of tutors that we have and the needs that we have with our kids, that we could use more tutors? That's my, because since COVID, I mean, I've just wondered if those numbers increased the need for children to have tutors, and then if that's come down at all, and then if we're losing, that's really heartbreaking.
Yeah, we actually were able to, kind of coming out of COVID, so during COVID, when we were receiving ESAR funds, one of the uses, one of the ways we utilize those funds is we made all of our Title I tutors complete full-time, I mean, starting on the first day of school, coming to life. We wanted to maximize everything. And so what we did was, you know, figured out what we could pay with Title I funds, and then covered the rest with ESAR. And the nice thing about that is we didn't have to worry about now when the ESAR funds stopped, you still have the tutors, you just went back to kind of what they were used to for their day. But we were able to, we have been able to do exactly what you said of like kind of figuring out how to maximize their amount of time to, right now, I actually feel like the current supports that we have are fairly adequate. I really feel like we do a good job of, our group sizes are not huge. I don't, we are not, we are certainly not turning anybody away. So I feel like we're in a good spot, but it absolutely will affect us when we have less.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, my thought is, you can't cut the people that work in front of the children, with the children, and that's, that's my thought. You know, you have to look at the big picture, and it's not a business per se, but we're in the business of educating children in, you know, preschool all the way up to grade 12. And yes, it's going to be very difficult when we have those discussions, but also that we, in my opinion, you can't cut teachers that are working in the classroom with the kids. And tutors work with the kids. There's ways, there's got to be. I have faith.
Faith doesn't pay the bills.
You're right. But we've got to figure it out.
Yes.
And we will work on that.
We will.
Definitely. Yeah, because we know Title I tutors makes, that makes the big portion of the Title I grant is the Title I tutors, and they are front-facing with the children. So we will, we will be looking at that.
Do you want to speak to the two special education grant summaries? Those have no substantial change, the other two grants that are, so that, the bright side. And those, IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, it's B, B because B applies to school-age children, so that's what the B is for. And those grants are around educating, meeting our obligations of educational needs of students with individual educational plans, ages three until they turn 22, so through age 21. And they're broken into two grants, one being the bulk of three until turning 22. And the supports through the grants include salaries related to educating students, related to their specific IEP needs. It involves contracted services, so all the supplemental services, physical therapy, speech and language, occupational therapy, et cetera, for the students, as well as some specialized equipment or specialized training modules. So if there is data collection needed and we need infrastructure for that, you know, some components for that, that's included. And then the second grant that you see there is early childhood. So that's our three-to-five-year-olds, and that's to intervene early to decrease the impact of a disability impacting a student's access to their education at the very earliest levels. And so that, again, goes more towards instructional assistance supports and some service materials that are specifically in individual education plans for the students. And again, those right now are not targeted for substantial changes in the amounts of those grants, but they are grants that do require our affirmation as a district to adhere to all of the regulatory requirements. We are required to document our maintenance of our local efforts towards the education of our students with disabilities as well. And we also are required to allocate a portion called pro-share, proportionate share, for students who are homeschooled, who live within our district, as well as, we have two schools, one school, Global, and Assumption School. So when we meet with, when I meet with those schools, if they have students that are attending within the boundaries of Milbury, and those students have an educational plan, that proportionate share amount, I need to make sure that we allocate at least the amount indicated within the state formulas, which is generally under $10,000 right now, towards services for the students that are either homeschooled and have an IEP or, and/or are attending a private school within the town of Milbury. So we have two of those schools. And so we meet three times a year regarding those funds as part of these grants.
And Mr. Chair, we're quite pleased that they haven't done anything with the IDEA grant, the special ed grant, because as you can see, that's $513,000. So any percentage reduction on that would be really tough to swallow because it's such a big grant, and we depended on it so much. And I guess I'll just wrap up our piece here, and just to give you an idea, we've just been talking about the entitlement grants. The school district each and every year goes after competitive grants as well. We've gotten grants for sped program improvement, project lead-the-way, innovation pathways, we've talked about this, technology, we've done capital skills grants, and of course, we've asked Senator Moore for some help on some earmark funds each and every year. So we try to supplement our entitlement grants with these competitive grants as well to help the school district and the community. So we're going to continue to do that this year. We might even do it a little bit more because some of the things we've been talking about. And lastly, everything we've talked about tonight, and anything Mr. Myers has put up on the screen, Mr. Meyer has put on our website for us, all these explanations on the grants, the dollars, the 27% decrease and all that. If you go to our website, we've started a new web section on the fiscal 2027 budget. We've placed all that information there. So people at home or in the audience can take a look on our website and see everything you've just seen.
Any final questions? Just sobering conversation. Mr. Bedard?
Yes, the second part of my report is, we would like the school committee to consider the acceptance of a gift from the class of 2024 in the amount of $7,328.36. They actually just put the exact number in there for you because that's what they donated. And as we've talked about before, when the class is here for their four years in high school, they take in dues, they pay for things like their senior activities. Many, many times, at the end of their time here, there is money left in their account. They are able to take that with them for reunions. We can't hold that here. So they either take it as a reunion account, or they make a donation. So if they make a donation, we make requests and suggestions. So the class of 2024 has actually done a little bit of both. That's sort of what we've recommended over the years. So they have taken about $2,500 as a reunion amount, the officers from the class of 2024, and they're looking to donate to us to put aside the $7,328.36 for the purpose of installing a decorative archway over the stone pillars at the entrance to the football field. So, you know, we have those stone pillars, so they've looked at that. Mr. McCray, we made a suggestion with Mr. Lowe and Ms. Mulligan about putting like an archway that they've seen at other football fields. So I'm not sure if this can pay for all of it, but this is really good seed money to go ahead and do that. So Mr. Lowe and Ms. Mulligan have sort of worked with Ashley Legore and Cadence Ray, the class advisors, the class officers from that year. So they are looking to, they've taken some for reunion, and they're looking to donate this amount. So we recommend the school committee accept the $7,328.36 from the class of 2024.
Can I have a motion to accept the donation?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bedard. All right, we'll go back to unfinished business. Update on the school roof repair and replacement project.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not too much to report. The school committee knows we're preparing for two major events for us in November. November 4th, there's a special town meeting. November 18th, there's a vote, because there's a debt exclusion on the roof project vote. So if everything goes well on November 4th, we work, look for the election on the 18th. So the only thing new would, I'd like the school committee to know about is, we have asked the project team, meaning Turva and Habib Associates, to continue working on the design and the bid specs, which will bring us to about 40% to 50% of construction documents for the Milbury Junior Senior High School roof and HVAC repairs project. So that's work that they can do now, up until those November key votes, that we can do now before we have funding. So in other words, we're still paying the bill so we can continue paying them with money that we have, primarily in school choice. The project, the work that they're doing on design for Elwood Street, the roof, the HVAC there, as well as the two solar projects, we've asked them to put that on hold until we see how the vote goes in November on both of those major milestones. So once we have the votes and we have the funding in place, we can move them forward because part of that appropriation would be the design team continuing their work. So we wanted the committee to know about that, that they are working on this still to get to bid documents, but we've tapped the brakes on the solar and the Elwood a little bit due to the funding, but we feel we have enough to continue on Milbury Junior Senior High School. That's our priority, so we want to get that closer to bid. So that pretty much still keeps us on schedule, except we're moving a little, a few things from December into January and February for bid documents. But our team, meaning Turva and Habib, still think we'll be on schedule to at least get started in the summer of 2026.
Anybody have any questions? We need everybody to come out and vote at the town meeting and at the election, so tell all your friends to come out and vote early and often. We'll move to new business. Mr. Bedard?
Yes, we wanted the school committee to know that, you know, this is the final year of the SEIU contract for custodians, secretaries, and cafeteria workers. The SEIU stands for Service Employees International Union, Local 888. They've been with us for quite some time. So now we have two SEIU contracts. We have the IAs, which is good for next year, but we have this group, which we have a contract for this year, but we do not have one for next year. So I'd like to ask the school committee to consider forming a negotiating subcommittee and maybe start the process of doing that, negotiating for next year. Again, with the thought being, the sooner we can start negotiating, the sooner we have an understanding of what we might have for cooler increases and things like that for next year, for 2027. So many, many times, we've waited to the spring, and we have a little bit of a disadvantage with our budget. So we're here tonight to ask you to form a subcommittee, and then we could ask the SEIU if we could begin the process.
And just to give a little more context for the newer members, we usually have two school committee members, along with administration, meet with and do all the negotiations, and then they bring it back to the full committee. So I love negotiating the SEIU, so if anybody would love to join me on that, that would be fantastic. I think teen is a no by that face.
I'm happy to.
You want to do it?
It's a very different experience from IBB. It's old-school negotiation.
I've had the pleasure of doing it a couple of times, so I can certainly.
I'm petrified.
Well, and there's plenty of opportunities because every year we have negotiations now with the other, with the IAs, right? It's this one, the IAs, and then the teachers. So we're negotiating contract every year, so that's a fun, fun time.
One of the teachers, next year?
This is the first year of three contracts.
Yeah, so we do have alternating by design, so that's.
Maybe I should do this one.
Well, we all do, we all do the teacher one.
We all get to play with that one. Kristen, you want to join me on that one?
Yeah.
There we go. I think we've got our subcommittee, Mr. Bedard.
Negotiation.
You like the exciting ones.
Does anybody else have any new business that you would like on a future agenda?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to end the meeting on a positive financial note. We got word that Senator Moore, once again, has come through for the town of Milbury, for the school district. He has two earmark grants that he has secured for Milbury, and I'm going to have that on the next agenda for the committee to approve. He's always been exceptionally, exceptionally just a great advocate for the school district.
You should have followed up Debbie Don or Bedard over that. Thank you for that. Hearing that there is no new business for future, we don't have any executive session. So our next meeting will be November 4th, just before the town meeting, correct? So that will be 6 o'clock here.
So, that will be 6:00 here, one of the rooms, I'm assuming.
We actually have the library reserved. I don't know if Mr. Christopoulos will need it for overflow, in which case, we'll move to the principal's conference room.
He's saying yes, so we will be in the principal's conference room.
Very good.
6:00 that night, so, excellent. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. See you at the next meeting.